Welcome to our October 14th regular board meeting. There, we're all seated except Ms. Ann Kent who's out of town. She sits right. She's out of town and could not be with us this evening, but we do have a call that will move forward without me. I would declare it to come to order and ask everyone to stand as we do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please remain seated standing for a minute if you will, for the privilege. Bow at a moment of silence if you will for Ms. Rose Cottle, Cottle who was the cafeteria worker at Tupper High School who passed this morning. A moment of silence for Ms. Rose. Thank you. May be seated.
Good evening. We hope that each of you have had an opportunity to pick up an agenda. We're going to follow it to the T and we believe we have a pretty thick one tonight. If you see us moving pretty fast, that's the reason we're trying to get out of here before 11 o'clock tonight. Okay, item number two. Do we have any additions or anything to the agenda, Dr. Bryant?
Ma'am Chair, just one correction under 6.6, items for information. The fiscal year 2324 should be fiscal year 2425. That's the only change, ma'am chair.
Can we hear a motion to approve the agenda with that correction, please?
Madam Chair, move for the adoption of the agenda with the correction made.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the agenda with the necessary correction. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Item number three, recognitions, Ms. Hope.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bryant. I'm excited to introduce the Employee of the Month for October. Mr. Kelvin Horn truly exemplifies dedication, compassion, and a commitment to excellence in his role as the ISS Coordinator at Martin Blinder Academy. According to Principal Dr. Kellyanne Mudd, he makes it a priority each morning to visit every homeroom from kindergarten through eighth grade. His warm greeting and genuine smile sets a positive tone for the day. Approaching his role through a lens of restorative justice, empathy, and compassion, Mr. Horn balances the needs for consequences with helping students understand their behaviors and find better ways to respond. He is always willing to step up when needed. He often volunteers as a substitute bus driver, ensuring students get to and from school safely and always with a smile on his face. His impact is felt across the district, especially in athletics. He has supported the MMA patilla basketball team as well as the Southwest Echcom basketball, football, and track teams. He is a true asset to the MMA family and it makes a daily difference for both students and staff. His unwavering dedication and positive attitude make MMA and ECPS a better place. Congratulations to Mr. Moore. And also have a gift card from Greg Sessom, State Farm Agent, from Mr. Moore.
You could leave a gift card to Pierce. Yes, sir. Major, sir.
Good evening.
And Dean Board members and Dr. Bryant and the stakeholders of Echcom County Public Schools. I am glad to be here with you all today. I am Chester Williams representing the School Meals for All North Carolina Coalition. Represent my organization, Better Chest, a Better Community, which is one of the partners that I will talk about as it relates to School Meals for All. As we all know that Echcom County is a CEP school district. So what I will talk to you today is about the ambassadors program, about the School Meals for All coalitions and ways that you all can support us on a statewide effort. But you'll also will meet two of your finest scholars here in Southwest Echcom High School who signed up to be student ambassadors to serve with other students across the state to advocate for no cost, breakfast, and lunch for all students and their families in other schools across North Carolina.
Hello, my name is Sekia O'Neal. My friends are Sheager and I'm a junior in Southwest Echcom and my role is an Echcom County Team Leader.
Hello, my name is Anonya Sheager. I'm not a junior, actually. I'm a sophomore at
So I'll do a quick overview. I'll be double the ambassadors take the way so they could talk to you about what they're doing in Echcom County and how y'all can support. So the School Meals for All is a coalition made up of four core team leaders. The North Carolina Alliance for Health, the Center for Black Health Equity, the Carolina Hunger Initiative, and of course, a Better Chest for Community. Because we know that children are born hungry in North Carolina and providing school meals to all public school students in North Carolina at no cost to their families is a clear way to reduce child hunger in our state. Echcom County has been one of the school districts that's been leading that because you always put your students first. So why is it important? One in five children in North Carolina go hungry every day. Child food insecurity leads to poor health outcomes and more than 60% of North Carolina children are eligible for free and reduced, as you know. So why do we have a high rate of children hungry in North Carolina? So I will introduce y'all to the ambassadors program in which we support students to be that voice, to share their story and experience, to uplift their school districts and the work that they do around school nutrition, but also to highlight the great work that is happening within most school districts, especially in rural North Carolina, but overall to advocate for no cost, breakfast, and lunch for all students.
The School Meals for All has ambassadors range from ages 13 to 24. Students that live in North Carolina and have a passion for community nutrition advocacy and leadership. What do we do? We have weekly meetings and we have chats about how we can change and train it to become better and how to help our community. So our Sunday chats, which do consist with training, we have this weekend, little Saturday where we had a workshop where we came together and we did, first I did a couple of workshops, it was pitch chat and meal planning. And then another one, we pushed how you can make sure we are feeling our bodies and giving our virtual. And also we had an experience of cooking. We made tacos and we made cookies.
So I go ahead to Sunday chats on every Sunday at 7:00. And best believe y'all, we have about 25 students from across the state that's up there talking about nutrition, but also having conversations about what's happening, how they can support each other's students, and getting training from others on the leadership team, USC Chopper Hill, about the importance of policy to understand. Because our students are in the classroom at school every day and sometimes they don't eat the lunch or breakfast, whatever. It gives them an understanding about the policies and what recommendations that goes into that so they can better advocate to their peers. Then sometimes you speak up to your school nutrition director or cafeteria manager and this is how you do it. Because numbers are important in the nutrition world. And if students are not eating the food, that impacts the overall culture of the school district. But understand what goes into this because it's not your cafeteria manager that makes that decision. It comes from the federal, state, and local. So we teach the student that's processed so they can be more engaged and actively in their nutrition programs. It is a paid position. They do get paid to do this work with us. They do team building activities. They get to speak and present at various conferences. They've been invited back this year to present at the National Service Learning Conference in St. Paul, Minnesota, because it was hit last year from the ambassadors from BERTA that present. So we're taking all the ambassadors this year. They have retreats during the summer. This year they're going to New Orleans to retreat with other leaders around School Meals for All across the nation so they get to see the inner workings of the program. So if you know any young people that would like to be an ambassador, you have that there too. Just click the QR code. Want to share your story? Share your School Meals for All story. If your story is that the pizza was amazing or the hot wheels was amazing, or if it's more personal, like this is the only meal that I get, it's at school. We want to hear those stories to uplift that. And then sign up to become an ambassador. You all can become champions also, to be a champion for this work to let people know the importance of nutrition.
As a leader of our district, our voice matters because if us as students, we don't have, sometimes you might feel like you don't have a say so, but us as team leaders and ambassadors, we would feel like we should have a say so in what we eat and what we put in our bodies. But then to impact the fact that we don't have, we're grateful and fortunate that we don't have, we reduce our meals at no cost.
I want to officially welcome you all to the School Meals for All family. Looking forward to working and partnering in your school district, Dr. Bryant. I will see you on Wednesday. Our BERTA ambassador will be presented to the Regional One Superintendent. So we're very excited to take this message on the road and thank you for allowing us to your schools and to your children's lives. And we're looking forward to a wonderful partnership. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
You all had a workshop Saturday, right?
That is correct, yes.
Was it well received, well attended?
It was not well attended. We did have some representation from the student population. We had a chance to talk with Mr. Langley to talk about future opportunities to do it again. But it was very informative to have those nutrition activities and then to actually cook on site, to do a cooking party with the children.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. And we want to continue to do more of those activities and provide that in partnership with your schools.
And you all, that's house breakfast and lunch, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank y'all for all of your hard work.
Really, really, you make a big difference.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, we're on item four. We do not have anyone signed up to speak at public comments, so we'll keep right on moving. Item five, approval of our open session minutes. We have four sets and we will need to approve each one individually. And we will start with our September 4th special call meeting. Do we have any corrections or anything that needs changing in that set of minutes? I did not find any, but you all may have. Hearing none, I need to hear a motion to approve our September 4th.
Make a motion to approve our September 4th, 2024 special call board meeting, open session minutes.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our September 4th, 2024 special call meeting, open session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. We'll move to our next set, which is September 9th set of minutes. Do we have any corrections or anything that we need to add or delete to this set of minutes? Hearing none, I need to hear a motion for approval of our September 9th.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of the September 9th, 2024 Regular Business Board Meeting, Open Session Minutes.
Second, has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our September 9th, 2024 Regular Business Board Meeting, Open Session Minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. September 11th, do we have any corrections or deletions to that set of minutes? Hearing none, I need to hear approval for September 11th.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the September 11th, 2024 Open Session Minutes of the Joint Meeting of Echcom County Board of Commissioners and Echcom County Board of Education.
Second.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our September 11th, 2024 Joint Meeting of our County Commissioners and School Board Meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. September 26th minute. Can we hear a motion for approval?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve September 26th Special Call Board Meeting, Open Session Minutes.
Second, has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our September 26th, 2024 Special Call Board Meeting, Open Session Minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Item number six, items for information. 6.1, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Start off with tonight. Want to review some of the things that have been going on within the district. Last Tuesday evening, we had a meeting regarding redistricting of Board of Education seats. We hope that meeting in East Rocky Mount, obviously as a result of the merger, a lot of interested folks within East Rocky Mount to discuss that. As you all know, the presentation highlighted processes and possible parameters moving forward for that. A lot of great comments, a lot of great questions at the meeting. As a follow-up from that meeting, there's an action item on tonight's agenda to provide specific representation for residents of East Rocky Mount on Board of Education until redistricting can actually occur or in opening to an election. That plan is due by December of 2025 for an election in 2026. And also, we'll be contacting you in the next couple of days, probably tomorrow, regarding a work session to discuss the criteria that have been covered in each of our redistricting meetings. And I'll be coordinating that with Doug Stager to make sure that we want to all different community in that work session so you all can discuss that and begin that process. Also excited for our COPS School Violence Prevention Program grant, which we received at the school district. Kudos to Mr. Hayes and Dr. Powell for all their hard work on that. Echcom County Public Schools was awarded $469,985. It is one of only three public school entities, one of only three public school entities in the state, received it. Received as a significant fund, it's part of a water initiative by the Department of Justice, Office of Community, and Police and Services, COPS, which has created a total of $17.6 million for law enforcement, enhanced public Which has created a total of seventeen point six million dollars for law enforcement, enhanced public safety across North Carolina. We're very excited to receive the grant and, uh, believe, uh, Mr. Hayes and Dr. Powell will highlight on, uh, W R E L this afternoon for all their hard work and what the grant really means. So thank them for all their, all their great work and, uh, Sheriff Atkinson partnership with, uh, law enforcement, Sheriff's Office, all great work. Uh, it was funded through the bipartisan slavery communities act, which was a critical piece of legislation that Senator Tom Tolle's helped negotiate, write and pass into law. And as you all know, in front of the ink to bolster school safety measures, providing essential resources for policy prevention. We're also excited to, uh, announce again, Edgecombe County Public Schools awarded sixty two million dollar grant for the new North Edgecombe School of Innovation. This was through the, uh, needs based grant from the North Carolina Department of Public Construction. Looking to serve students in pre-K twelve. This project will bring together three schools in North Edgecombe County, including Coker River Elementary School, Phillips Middle School and North Edgecombe High School on the one site. Initiative includes renovations of North Edgecombe High School, construction of a new curriculum education center facility hopefully, and creation of, uh, facilities for pre-K eight and refurbishment of pre-homes and athletic funds. And, uh, believe this will significantly benefit our students and our larger community or stay the art education facility. And we're very excited about, about that. Also excited to announce, uh, tomorrow evening, Title One Numbers Lab Family Night. Families of Edgecombe County Public Schools invite to learn about the number, number lab, math, lock being implemented at elementary and middle schools. Tuesday, October fifteenth, six thirty P M in the Tarver High School meetings. We're sure steps E C P S is taken towards a framework that reflects rich, open and informed. And you already know, it's been ongoing in our school district for a while and, uh, very, very excited about the, uh, opportunities that are being created out of that. So of course, last week and a half, I've been meeting with our high school student advisory groups. Roughly over about a hundred students that, uh, meet with and, uh, always enjoy getting their feedback and information they have regarding how we can improve our schools. Uh, they, they always, uh, give, give us perspective and, uh, it's critically important, I think, for us as we try to enhance our schools. And, uh, our students are afraid and look forward to some, uh, opportunities for them in the near future regarding leadership. Reminder for everyone about upcoming planning dates, Friday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, the planning day for all teachers in the near future. And then also on your agenda tonight, uh, we have five schools that are polling sites. So recommendation to, uh, take November fifth, the six five schools and turn them into, uh, required workdays. Move my report now, Chair.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone having questions to Dr. Brown about anything that he has reported on? It's a lot of work and we appreciate it. Okay? No questions, so we do have this shot to take home with us. Six point two maintenance update, Mr. Perkins.
Chair, leaving the vice chair. For them, superintendent, Dr. Brian, I'll begin, uh, we reflect his updates. This is Perry, that we move. The door was rotten, so we'll take it out and replace it. This is Perry, can't be after. This is called the new pipeline. It's called the old chemical garden unit. This is the new unit to be putting in. This is the R T C green pipe installation before.
Thank you very kindly for that report.
Yes, ma'am.
You're being kept out of business now.
Yes, ma'am.
A little more on the school's end it to you. We appreciate, uh, you, uh, being able to get things done in between our board meetings and share with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we just happen to have old schools. Even the ones we had before you, those are old schools as well, many years on. So we know that we have to keep knocking at it, but we appreciate your team and what you all do.
And I'll let them know.
Okay, please do.
I'll let them know.
Okay. Does anybody else want to ask Mr. Perkins any questions about what that, his team is doing?
Right, right, many, uh, problems. Does that kind of catch them up, man?
I can't, I can't.
Cover has had right many problems. Does this catch them up as far as you can tell?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We got, uh, we got a mobile unit and we work on the bar unit. Uh, we need to focus on that too. And that's going to be a great trip. So how do we go and get a focus on that?
And appreciate what you do because oftentimes people just think about school and the building. And they are, they are the upkeep of it and especially the schools that, like somebody said, they're old schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And the before and after pictures are phenomenal. And I just wish, you know, I, I, I hope they will come when our community will gather in for our meetings so they can see that you all are really working. And a lot of things they don't see, but you still, the work is going on.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Six point three, our technology updates.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Brian. Tonight I'm going to present some technology updates. This is pretty much for the last four months, so first quarter of this year. Um, I want to start though by showing you an outstanding team, which you can view right here. You may see these people as you go into buildings, in and out of buildings. But this is the technology team is one of the greatest teams in Edgecombe County. Um, there's a lot of great teams in Edgecombe County. This happens to be one of the best, if not the best. So I just want to raise them up and say they do an outstanding job. So every slide that you see after this is pretty much due to this outstanding team right here. Um, you see me in the middle there, but I'm no, I'm not in the front, I'm not in the back, I am in the middle. So I'm on their shoulders. So, you know, um, I stand on the shoulders of giants and this is my outstanding team here. So we're going to focus first on our East Rocky Mount schools and this is an update from July first until now. So July first, that first week, um, of school was a, uh, outstanding week for our technology because we went into those schools on July first, first thing that morning. And between July first and that Friday, we took July fourth off. Um, we got the network going in those schools, so they had both internet and wifi. We also got their phones up and going in that school and all the schools. Um, and so that first week, second week we rolled in, they're pretty much ready for business with phones and internet. Uh, we followed up with cameras and door access in those schools, uh, for security. And then my team put hands on every device, every computer, everything in those buildings, one at a time, to make sure they were ready for teachers and students on day one, which they were. And we finished up with copiers and printers, which we brought in and configured for the school. So, um, I don't know if you heard anything from East Rocky Mount schools about how schools started, but I can assure you, technology was ready on day one for those schools. Um, the next I'd like to follow up with the door, um, district security project. You may recall, um, previously last year that, um, the board approved us to spend some money on, um, upgrading our door access across the district. Um, this project is now complete. Uh, fifteen sites across the school district, over a hundred and eight doors, and we installed our video and air phone, um, for entries. Uh, we also put our card readers on several doors across the campuses, and this is including our C O buildings. And then we issued, um, badge, access badges to all our staff in our schools. So now every staff member has a door access card that they can get into their building. If they serve multiple buildings, they can also access multiple buildings with these cards. Um, our East Rocky Mount schools, as I said before, they had a, um, they had an existing door access system that we brought online. Uh, we brought over to our system and now that's part of our system too. Okay? Next, I hope you remember that we did get a, over a million dollar grant last year, which we were presented to over in South Middle. Uh, we had a, had the big checkout that day. Um, that was our RUS grant, our telehealth project and, um, telecommunications project. So between spring and also in the month of July, so basically all installation happened in July when we were doing the East Rocky Mount schools too. Um, they came in and installed over a hundred panels. These are interactive panels with all the accessories. And they also installed telehealth stations in our middle schools and high schools. And on the picture there, that's the one that has the iron bow on it. These panels and the telehealth station will allow us to connect across the district. Um, the telehealth stations will allow our mental health providers to connect with students, um, and faculty, um, and also nurses across the district too. So if a nurse is not at every school, there's a nurse at least at one school that can connect instantaneously to this station, um, to address student problems. Dr. Battle and myself has also implemented first things, first Fridays as well as lessons. We still had the first one kickoff, um, last Friday, Friday before last, Friday before last, actually. Uh, we focused on cyber bullying and bullying. We also had the, um, Sheriff's Department come in and help us out with that lesson. Um, and we have one coming up at the first Friday in November. Will be our next one and we'll follow up each month with a wellness lesson. I would want to point out that after the wellness lesson, we have a Google forum, we have Q R codes, we have web, web links where students can identify themselves as needing help. Our student friends can identify other friends as needing help. Our teachers can identify students as needing help for any topic that we discuss. And they'll provide it, uh, one-on-one contact with their counselor, um, with Dr. Battle's staff and with our gaggle mental health services that we have. So that's a terrific project, I think, is well underway. For communication, I just wanted to address this. We have moved to ApptiG for our communications tool across the district. This is for our district website, all our school websites. It also ties in social media, so we can not only post to a district website or school website, but at the same time you make that post, you can also post, um, to social media accounts, whether it be Facebook, Instagram. At the same time you're doing that, you can also post to, um, the parents and students' cell phones. It all happens at one time if you choose to let it happen at one time. And then for our rooms, that's two-way communication. This is for teachers to communicate directly with students and parents and vice versa to teachers. So that's what we're pushing out. We had training in August. We had training last month. We'll provide additional training at the beginning of next semester until we have, um, this two-way communication established across the district and every teacher is utilizing that to connect to parents. And that's ApptiG. For student online safety, we're using Go Guardian. The state provided this service for us and this allows teachers to monitor students' online behavior during class. Uh, it allows students, um, teachers to dictate what site students can go to or cannot go to during class. Um, student, teachers can also record presentations live and post them after class for students who maybe were absent or need to review can watch. And lastly, at the end of every class, a teacher gets a report of every website the student was on and what time they were on it. So this is not for a, a teacher, as you see on the screen here, to view all the students', um, screens at one time. This allows the teacher to, to, to not do that and facilitate learning in the classroom by concentrating on one-on-one and small group interactions without having to worry about students on websites they shouldn't be on. So the student is free to walk around the classroom and actually teach. For our digital literacy, we're using learning.com. Again, the state provided learning.com for us is our K eight digital learning platform for digital literacy. Uh, we have, um, instructed all K eight students to take a online course in digital literacy through this platform. Upon completion, hopefully by January first, um, all students will have a certificate for digital literacy. And this will also help us out to be S I P A compliant, um, for our E rate program. So that is learning.com. For student engagement, I just want to, um, lift up Spark N C again, our Spark lab at Southwest. I know many of you were able to come to our, um, Spark nights and view what was happening in those labs. Just want to announce that that is now offered at, as a course at Tarver High this semester and at North next semester, they have their own class too. And anyone can take the class as a fifth block outside the school day, so students can learn on their own pace and their own place. And they can choose anything that they want to learn to learn within that platform. It also provides student-centered, hands-on lessons, um, and what you see in the pictures, students are doing and loving. So we're again, we're trying to push this out and making sure every student understands that they do have this opportunity, um, for Spark. And I'll finish up, this is all the things, but this is not all the things that are up and coming. This is just a, a portion of them. Uh, but we do have our first Lego league for, it's robotics for elementary and middle. We have our first tech league, which we have North and Tarver High. We just started those programs, robotics programs there. And our first robotics at the early college, um, that's up and going now too. We have invention convention coming up in the winter this year where students, middle school students, um, work in teams to design a business plan, a actual product and go before the committee of judges to show them their project and to get questions, just like from Shark Tank. We have our Brick City Challenge, which is a elementary, um, STEM challenge, robotics challenge, which we competed in the spring along with our STEM design challenge, which is the middle school robotics challenge and all middle school students will participate in. NASA Plant to the Moon. We had, this is our first year last year, so this is our second year of Plant to the Moon. M M A actually had a team to win statewide third place. Um, so they placed statewide as for innovation, which is outstanding for a team's first year. Um, so we're hopeful that we will have many more teams placed this year. We have elementary Battle of the Books, which is in March, and also this year we will have, uh, middle school Battle of the Books. Um, while not every school will participate in middle school Battle of the Books, we do have several schools that are this year. Um, and so we helped to grow the Battle of the Book program too. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
You've said a lot.
I did.
Madam Chair, that man can just expand on one thing very briefly. Uh, Spark, in the Spark lab, some of the things that students can take through the Spark lab. So again, the Spark itself is a platform, but it's just a, really the platform is just one component of it. The other components is a different way of doing school. Um, so the students basically have like eight pathways that they can choose from. It could be A I, it could be computer programming, um, it could be cybersecurity. So there's several pathways that a student can say, I want to try that pathway out. They don't have to stay on one pathway. They could try it out and if they don't like pathway on cybersecurity, they could go to gaming, um, esports or A I and they could start that pathway. Ultimately, we want to give the students the opportunity to see, these are all the things that's out there. Give them success at, at completing at least one of the units for a pathway. And ultimately, if they, um, successfully complete six units and do a Keystone project, they get credit, um, for Spark. They can take the classes, I say it, anytime they want to within the school day or the school year or during their high school experience. So it's continuous, but we do offer it as a block, um, because we think that's more, that offers students a more opportunity to get the help they may need and leads to more success within the classroom to have a dedicated ninety minutes, ninety minutes of time they can concentrate on Spark. Um, besides those pathways, students also do hands-on activities such as, um, the Mickey Mickey unit is a all-hands-on activity. Beta Box comes and brings the STEM lab and they can go in their beta box and do two days to earn a unit for STEM activities that way. And they offer a variety of field trips across North Carolina, where they may go up to Apple or they may go to an esports arena and they can get, um, units that way too. So it's a wide array of things that they're introduced to that they may not otherwise be able to do. So that's pretty much Spark.
How much parent involved, how you, uh, involve in the parent, the parents? How do these words get out to our parents?
So we've been recruiting mainly at the school level, but we do have Spark nights where we're inviting, um, school board members, county commissioners, anyone in the community really to come out and see what the students are doing. Um, some of the units also, um, such as our units with District C, um, that's part of Spark. And also we implement District C in the district outside of Spark now, it's grown. Uh, but that allows, um, students to work together in collaborative units. And then they present a actual product that a business is suffering with or needs help with. a actual product that a business is suffering with or needs help with. They work for three, four weeks on this product, and they present it back to the business, their ideas, and the business questions them back and forth until they come up with, we like that, or it could be improved. But parents are invited to those sessions too. So between Spark Nights, District C, presentations at night, things like that, parents most definitely can participate.
What is the participation that you've seen? Has this been your, up to your expectation?
So at Southwest is where we initially started Spark. Originally, we had the summer to pretty much the month of, this was the summer before last, June and July to get everything up and going in the lab itself, and then recruit pretty much in August. So recruitment, we recruited over there, and semester one, we probably had like twelve students in each class. Semester two, that grew. And this semester, very Southwest, we have twenty-plus taking Spark in those, those blocks of time. Whereas you can still be enrolled in Spark but not have to attend the class. And we have students who do that too. Across the district, at North, I think we have about eight kids who had started doing Spark on their own, just without a class. And again, they need some help, and that's what we intend to do, is provide them more opportunities to get that one-on-one help with the facilitators at the school level now.
So the parents of the students doesn't have to be the parents that's participating?
No, no, no. The parents don't have to actually participate in the program. They can support their children. One way parents can help their children out is by taking their students to after-school Spark classes, which we do offer, or they could even come on Saturdays, which we offer too. So there's, right now, the Spark Lab leader at Southwest is doing some Saturday academies and things like that, and she also stays after school. I know they release early. When I say early, around 2:30, 2:35, she's there to afford, to support kids in after school too.
This is exciting. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to, it's up here with me, I'm going to find 6.4 and 6.5. It was two, Wade and Community Use of Facilities. First for the Brown family using North Edgeville High School cafeteria and courtyard on September 28th for balloon, balloon release for Ms. Sheila Brown, and then also Wade and Community Use Facility for that, a better chance, better community, for nutrition workshop. That's from Southwest. Ms. Pierce, Dr. Mauer. This is for informational purposes only. You'll be provided with the school improvement plans that you have, and they'll be out there for thirty days to get public feedback or review feedback. Turn it over to Ms. Pierce and Dr. Mauer.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Lee, Vice Chair, Mr. Ellis, Superintendent Dr. Bryan, the school board members. Like Dr. Bryan explained, we are coming before you tonight just to present the comprehensive plans for each school for the 2425 school year. Comprehensive plans, you may also hear them called school improvement plans, it's the same, the term is used interchangeably. As part of the comprehensive plans being submitted, we do have some low-performing schools, and per general statute, the plan has to be made available to the board and to the public for public feedback for thirty days. And then once that thirty-day feedback period is closed, then the plans will be approved by the school board. So tonight, we're presenting the plans to the school board for you to have over the next thirty days for review. You may reach out to Dr. Bryan, I mean to Dr. Myrie, if you need a scheduled opportunity to discuss and ask questions. He'll be a point of contact for that. We also wanted to make you aware that per legislation and the ESSA federal law, school boards also have to approve the Title I plans, the comprehensive school improvement CSI plans, and the Target School Improvement, the ATSI plans that are submitted each year. So when you come back next month at the board meeting, your approval of the comprehensive plan will also be your approval of each of those plans for the school, as that is the same platform that they use. So whatever they're using their federal funds for is written as an action step in their school plans. So we wanted to make sure you're aware. In the item for information, we did put before you the list of low-performing schools this year, their school letter grade, and their designation. We also listed each of the Title I, CSI, and TSI schools for you as well, so that you would have that information as your review and plans.
And also, just a reminder, when you're looking at the plans, because they're comprehensive, you may see things in there from four, five, six years ago, but to help focus your attention, look for things from September 2024, and then some plans may end in June 2026. So that would kind of help you narrow down what you're looking at.
And that's just the setup of the platform. It's a continuous platform, a continuous plan, and so that's why you will see some completed items still in there. The state likes to tell the full school improvement story over a year, so that's why you'll see those dates.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have just one more thing. What you see, what we bring these plans, and at the district level, there's an emphasis on data analysis, professional learning communities, and curriculum alignment. Focus really on indicators that are really important for us and our students and our community, graduation rate, reading, math, science. And we really try, try to narrow that focus down, and I hope that is clear in our plans we presented and working to together to make the plans better.
I think I'm the one that always, you might remember, I always asked questions about, I haven't read the plans, okay? Just the document you provided this, so. You'll hear from me, I'm sure. I read every one.
And then also this evening, you were given a copy of the district plan. The district this year has been identified as a low-performing district. Per general statute, if over fifty percent of schools are identified as low-performing, then this district also has the low-performing status. So also, the plan has to be submitted, the district plan, to the school board and to the community for feedback. And so you have a printed copy of the district plan as well. And then all of the plans are posted on the website as of this evening with the feedback link for parents and the community to review specific school plans and to give us feedback on those plans.
Would there be indications as to which, if they have been completed? We go back, but will we have indications as we look at it that this has been completed, this is completed, or something is ongoing? Will they, these be indications there?
The due date will be in there, and like there will also be a frequency of how, how often that, that task. So some tasks might have a due date of like a month or two, because the school would be able to complete it within a month or two. Some may have a due date of June 2025, but they'll be, like, it'll say quarterly, and so they, you'll see notes below it if they've done anything towards that task, but it's not quite completed because they need to do it additional quarters. And then we will print a new copy of the final plans for the next board meeting for you that shows any revisions that were shared with the schools.
And periodically, we will find, we will have updates as to who has completed this, who has not, because we wouldn't know.
Yep.
Periodically, we are going to know who has completed what.
Yes, we can print out updated plans, because they, they are required by law to meet at least monthly to go over and discuss school improvement plans and actions, and to use the platform to update either with notes or completion dates. And they also have to upload their minutes. So we can also share guest login, so there's guest login for each page as well, so you can log in at any time and see what's going on.
If I may, one thing, we're, we're, uh, start for the first time, professional learning meetings across the district that are happening now at the elementary, veteran, high school level. And I am more than happy to come back and report on those PLCs and what they look like to you all, and I will make sure that you see, see what that progress is. That's new for us? Sure. And we think it's great to bring, bring together collective knowledge of our, of our teachers across the district, with MCLs particularly, who are helping facilitate some of that, and also administrators as part of those meetings as well. Sometimes there's a strength in one school, in particular, a grade level or subject, that can be shared across the district, and that's what we're trying to do in looking at data with common assessment.
And this will help us know where we are and where we're going, how we're getting there, the progress we are made, we are making. Can we also get when those learning, those schools are involved in those learning? So in case we want to participate or see? Because we, we need to know where we are. We really do need to know where we are.
I think that would be outstanding.
Periodically. Don't wait to the end of the year.
And it guides, everybody working together on the same page, and basically we see where we are, and basically it's good with the conversations and people just not, I mean, everybody, it's going to take everybody to do it. So, so really, it's going to be really, it's a neat process. It sounds new, but that's what we used to do back in the day. It's sound, but I mean, back in the day, we had a real zero in on children learning, what they're doing, whether they're succeeding or whether they're failing, because that, that is how you move that needle up.
Some of the meetings are in person, some are virtual, but we'd love to have you all be a part of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We know who to call. Committee reports, we do not have any for this particular meeting. 8.8, our consent items. Dr. Bryan?
Madam Chair, we have a extended day trip for stocks to the Lethal City, 11/21/24. Also, several fundraisers there at Carver, Coquembly Stocks, Carver, then Coquembly and MMA. If any question you might have.
Sam, will have any questions on any of those items we will call for?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our consent items as presented. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion's kicked. Thank you, Sam. We're moving to 8.3, items on action.
Madam Chair, it's my great pleasure to ask your approval to accept Need-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant Fund and now sixty-two million dollars for North Edgeville School of Innovation Pre-K 12 Construction Project.
All right, I need the motion that's recommended.
Madam Chair, what's the acceptance and the approval of the acceptance of Need-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant Funds awarded to Edgeville County Public School from NCDPI in the amount of sixty-two million dollars for the North Edgeville School of Innovation Pre-K 12 Construction Project? I can read all, and that's good.
Thank you. I'm happy you didn't leave that day now.
We never had that much. Really. This is the first.
Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the acceptance of our Need-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant Funds awarded to ECPS from NCDPI in the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars. I mean, sixty-two million.
We want to get that, we want to have that right.
Y'all screaming, make sure you don't get caught with the wrong amount on that. My God. Sixty-two million dollars for the North Edgeville School of Innovation Pre-K 12 Construction Project. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly.
And Madam Chair, just one piece of information for that. We've started advertising for the request for qualifications for the architectural design.
Oh, right.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Bryan. Edgeville County Public Schools has been awarded grant funds from the Department of Justice, COPS School Violence Prevention Program. The Technology Department requests board approval to accept the grant funds for the 2024 COPS School Violence Prevention Program Grant in the amount of four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. The purpose of the COPS SVPP grant is to provide funding for school security. This grant will focus on security upgrades and preventative measures at fifteen school sites. This grant will cover seventy-five percent of the total grant requested, with the remaining twenty-five percent allotted from local capital outlay. I wrote those dollar signs and figures for you underneath with that chart. This grant will cover school security cameras, upgrading school security cameras, also window film protection at all our school sites that currently do not have that protection, and security ones at our school sites that do not have the Evolve machine.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Haines on this particular item?
There are none. We need to have a motion called for. Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept a 2024 COPS School Violence Prevention Program Grant in the amount of four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we will accept the grant fund awarded to ECPS from the United States Department of Justice, our 2024 COPS School Violence Prevention Program in the amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. We'll move to item 8.3.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and other members of the board, and Dr. Bryan. I'm here tonight to seek your approval for the contract between Edgeville County Board of Education and the Interpreter Network Services. We have several students that have came into our district that are deaf, and they need one-on-one interpreters to give them throughout the day. So that's what we need this contract for. Any questions?
I don't have any. What about? Okay, I need to have a motion called for.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the contract between Edgeville County Board of Education and the Interpreter Network for Implantation Services, Interpretation Services for the Acceptance of Children's Problem for the 2425 school year, the total amount not to exceed one-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars using PRC O-32 Title II Funds.
And I need to make a correction to that, I'm sorry. That is not Title II, that's EC State Funds. It is O-32, but it's not Title II.
Using EC State Funds. Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the contract between Edgecombe County Board of Education and the Interpreter Network for our Exceptional Children's Program for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly.
Madam Chair, Board Members, I recommend the change to regular school day on Tuesday, November fifth, only at the Board of Elections School Voting Sites at DS Johnson Elementary School, GW Bullock Elementary, JW Parker Elementary, Martin Millennium Academy, and Phillips Middle. I'd like to change those from regular school day at those five schools to required workdays because they're so different places and just believe that for sure everybody's safety, it's the best way to get. After the calendar change, obviously, for those possible.
Anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, we need the motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we approve the change to regular school day to a required teacher workday on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the Board of Elections School Voting Sites at DS Johnson Elementary, GW Bullock Elementary, JW Parker Elementary, Martin Millennium Academy, and Phillips School.
Certainly.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we will approve to change the regular school day to a required teacher workday on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the Board of Education, for the Board of Elections School Voting Sites at DS Johnson Elementary, GW Bullock Elementary, and JW Parker Elementary, and Martin Millennium Academy, and Phillips School. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chair, just a comment if you will, having worked those polls places in the past, this is gonna help us. It gets extremely hectic and dangerous. I was at the Johnson and the Parker site last night and the traffic with buses, buses get out of there as fast as they can. But it gets to be hectic and will, and this is gonna help us a lot and all the while.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, may I ask Mr.? The Martin site gets dark behind the vote building where they vote. It gets really, really dark. Can we ask Mr. Maintenance, Mr. Perkins, to check on the light back there? It gets extremely dark.
He and I are meeting in the morning and go ahead.
You talking about that faces the parking lot?
Yeah.
I don't think there currently is a light that faces that parking lot.
It's dark out there. I visit those sites, it's dark.
We'll check on it. I'll meet with Mr. Perkins this morning, actually, if that doesn't matter.
What is the time? Oh, it's really?
Seven thirty. It's black out there.
Time hasn't changed, so it's true.
And people have been calling me, ain't nothing I can do at seven thirty. Yeah, very dark.
Any other question? All right, we're moving on. Okay, eight point five B.
Madam Chair, Board Members, this is a, this is a discussion that's come up at two different meetings regarding redistricting representation in Rocky Mountain. I'm pushing through to extend that representation, designate Board Chair Dr. Evelyn Wilson on northern part of Rocky Mountain. And Board Member Joel Calhoun on southern part of Rocky Mountain for Rocky Mountain constituents to have specific representation until the redistricting can happen in time for the election of two thousand twenty-six. As I said, this is a specific extension of these two current zones that Dr. Wilson and Ms. Calhoun represented and discussed at those meetings as a, as a, as a way to facilitate that representation and the easy way sort of do it that would make sense to a lot of law groups. Is that for consideration? And I should say, because, because your districts surround Rocky Mountain to northern.
Intentional areas, intentional areas.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve to designate Board Chair Dr. Evelyn Wilson on the northern part of Rocky Mountain and Board Member Joel Calhoun on the southern part of Rocky Mountain for Rocky Mountain constituents to have specific representation.
I need to make that motion, and you carry the whole thing. Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we designate Board Chair Dr. Evelyn Wilson for the northern part of Rocky Mountain and Member Joel Calhoun on the southern part of Rocky Mountain for the Rocky Mountain constituents to have specific representation.
Any further questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Same.
No questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Ellis, I would just reiterate, like to reiterate what all the members of the board that said, that were sitting up here tonight and Ms. Kent, that even what was asked by the board, the board takes a stance that all seven board members represent the interest of all the children in Edgecombe County Public Schools.
I see that you need to back this, but no.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we're moving down.
I make a motion under the North Carolina Open Meeting Law, Section One, Section 143-318 point eleven, A1, A3, and A6, to go into closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to first preserve attorney-client privilege information, and to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under GS 115C-319 through 321.
Certainly.
Has been moved and seconded. We move to closed session. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Eight point five.
...and family. The feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school, whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search Edgecombe County Public Schools in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's everything ECPS in your pocket.
10.13, our extracurricular activities, our fall sports.
What was that correction?
The number of years.
Number of years.
For several weeks.
Is someone?
Oh, second. There's somebody second?
No. I'm thinking so. Has been moved and properly second that we will approve 10.12, our extra, I'm sorry, 10.13, our extracurricular activities, our winter sports with the necessary correction. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. 10.2, our closed session minutes. Okay, we have set for September 4th. Do we have a motion to approve September 4th closed session minutes?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead. You got it.
Madam Chair, make motion to approve our September 4th special call meeting minutes, closed session minutes.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second that we will approve our September 4th, 2024 special call board meeting closed session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion is carried. Okay, our September 9th, 2024 closed session minutes. We need a motion.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of the September 9th, 2024 regular business board meeting closed session minutes.
Second. Has been moved and properly second that we will approve September 9th, 2024 regular business closed session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. September 26th.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the September 26th, 24th special call board meeting closed session minutes.
Second.
Has been. Has been moved and second that we will approve our September 26th, 2024 special call board meeting closed session minutes. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye. Oppose? Same sign. Motion is carried. Okay? Board correspondents, do we have them? Anyone? Hearing none? We move it. Item 12, items brought by board members or superintendent to consider discussion.
Ma'am.
I was gonna ask you, what you were talking about, you said it was, we didn't need to take action on it. Why, what you, your last statement?
That is correct.
Oh, okay. So now you just begin to say something else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to provide one, one piece of information, and we'll be advertising this certainly more, but Special Olympics is set to date for the spring, April 10th, for ages It's April 10th for ages 3 through 7. And then April 11th for ages 8 through 21. And that is a rain date of April 14.
Is it again, please?
April 10th for ages 3 through 7. And April 11th for ages 8 to 21. And then a rainy day of April 14. And then that location is Parkborough High School. Of course, we'll be advertising that plenty between now and then, but just wanted to get that on your calendar.
Thank you.
And we got two dates because the state has divided the children.
I can see this three. Any other thing? Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we will adjourn this meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign.